Twenty twenty-two, I apologize for the late start as we were, thank you, as we were in a, um, an executive session. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
[inaudible]
So we, um, I will open it with, um, a call for public participation. This is a time where you can speak on any issue that you'd like, whether it's on the agenda or not. Throughout the meeting, there will be opportunity to, uh, speak to particular issues as well, but I welcome, um, community members up now.
Thank you, Chair Person. Uh, this is Dan Burnham from the Radnor Township Green Team and the Environmental Advisory Council. Uh, I am very pleased to see that on the consent agenda is a, uh, request, uh, for a RFP, uh, for a comprehensive energy audit of municipal, uh, buildings. Uh, this follows on from our renewable energy and conservation plan that was approved in twenty twenty-one by the township, uh, whereby energy conservation is the foundation by which we will reduce greenhouse gases and eventually, uh, convert, uh, to renewable energy. Uh, the, there is already evidence from other townships that energy conservation measures in, uh, uh, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and lighting systems, just those alone, not talking about building envelope, uh, necessarily. Those, uh, upgrades can result in significant reductions in energy costs. Uh, for example, a twenty-eighteen energy assessment of Radnor's, uh, four township buildings, uh, was carried out by PICO, and it again emphasized that HVAC and lighting upgrades could result in energy cost savings, uh, of twenty-one percent or eighteen thousand, uh, eighteen thousand dollars per year just for this building alone. Uh, the Public Works Building, uh, was estimated to have energy cost savings of about sixteen percent. Uh, so it doesn't take, uh, much effort to see a fairly rapid return on investment, uh, from these upgrades. Uh, another, uh, real actual, actualization of upgrades was done by the Springfield Administrative and Police Building and Library, and there was a seventeen to twenty-five percent reductions in energy use as actually measured after the upgrades in HVAC, uh, were done. Uh, the savings in annual energy costs were estimated to be about thirty thousand dollars and a two-hundred percent return on investment. Uh, thus, uh, we feel that this, uh, attention to the energy use particularly in this building, uh, could be used as a showcase to the community of the benefit both financially and environmentally of, uh, conserving energy and eventually to prepare, uh, buildings for, uh, solar energy, either used onsite or, uh, from remote locations. Uh, there are opportunities now, thanks to the Infrastructure Bill and Inflation Reduction Act, for funding of, uh, building upgrades of this nature for municipal buildings. For example, there's money through the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grants and the Climate Pollution Reduction Grants. These will become available under the IRA, uh, next year for municipal governments. Other possible funding opportunities include CPACE, that is the, uh, Commercial Property Assessment Clean Energy Program, uh, which is available through Delaware County, and the Green Energy Loan Fund, uh, through the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. Uh, and we all know that PICO provides rebates, uh, for, uh, appliances and lighting systems that, uh, meet certain Energy Star standards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, this leads us to, um, the consent agenda itself. Is there any other public comment on an item on the consent agenda? I'm not seeing anything. Is there anything on the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to pull off? Seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second? And all in favor say aye? Opposed? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the business agenda, and our first item is the Radnor Township School District Presentation on School Bus Camera Program.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here with, uh, the Radnor Township School District to brief the board, uh, on an opportunity the school district has discovered and wrote a letter to us on October eighteenth. Um, the school district has found that there's technology available through a company called Bus Patrol, and we have a representative from that agency as well. But as you know, uh, we are constantly working on making our roadways safer, managing traffic, but obviously children getting on and off the school bus. The purpose of this program is to help, uh, catch violators of people not acknowledging the red lights of a school bus. So they've approached us. There's some stuff Sergeant Mark Stans from the Highway Patrol Unit has researched this along with Mr. Rice, who also has been involved in the beginning investigation of this. So I'm just going to turn it over to them and let them answer your questions.
Thank you very much for having us out this evening. Just to make some introductions, uh, my name is Brian Pauling. I'm the Business Administrator, uh, for the Radnor Township School District. Um, and next to me is David Gold. He is a program manager with, uh, the company we partnered with called Bus Patrol. Um, he has a twenty-six-year career in law enforcement with the Phoenixville, uh, Police Department. We wanted to come out this evening to talk a little bit about the program, um, that we as a school district are very excited about. Um, there's been a lot of incidents of, uh, across the Commonwealth and across the country of students being jeopardized by motorists passing school buses illegally. Um, and there's only so many resources to catch these violators in, uh, in person when they do this. Um, but through, um, a, a state program that was approved a few years ago, we now have the capacity as a school district to equip our school buses with cameras to capture violators that would pass school buses. So we wanted to provide a little bit of background. Um, well, Act Thirty-eight of two thousand twenty was passed by the, the governor, uh, as presented by the legislature, uh, which allowed school districts to implement a violator-funded stop-arm enforcement program. Um, so what that does is it allows the school district to enter into an agreement with a company like Bus Patrol to provide cameras for our school buses that we can capture violators that pass the buses illegally. Um, there was a pilot study done by Bus Patrol at the Allentown School District, and a lot of the crux of this in Pennsylvania came from the Allentown School District. Uh, there was a, a very concerned parent whose child was almost killed by a motorist passing a school bus. Now luckily, the child was unharmed, um, but she really worked with her local legislators to get this legislation in Harrisburg passed back in twenty twenty. And through that pilot program, as she was working through this with the school district, they captured more than two hundred drivers illegally passing stopped school buses in just forty-seven days on two buses. So you can do that if a school district like Allentown had this equipped on all their buses, what that would look like and how many violators they could potentially be capturing. Now, the difference between the program set up through Act Thirty-eight and a criminal violation where you receive points and lose your license for passing a school bus is this is a civil violation. So it's a monetary violation that, that's, um, enacted to the violator, who, the registered owner of the vehicle that's caught doing the violation. Of that three hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars of that comes back to the school district, that helps us defray the cost of the camera. So a positive of this program is that it's no cost to the district or the taxpayers of, of Radnor Township. The money, the, uh, money comes from the violators, um, the equipment is installed, and then over our five-year agreement with Bus Patrol, um, that revenue that we receive from the violations helps to offset the cost of the equipment and for the, the monitoring that goes along with that during the term of the agreement. Of the remaining fifty dollars, twenty-five dollars goes to the local law enforcement agency for their time of their involvement, which we'll talk about in a minute, and then twenty-five dollars to a state safety fund that was established as part of Act Thirty-eight. So there've been many other districts. If you've been reading newspapers, you see it on the news. NBC Ten did a, uh, a story on this, uh, a couple weeks ago. There's been a number of articles of other districts, um, Bethlehem, Methacton, Spring Grove, Phoenixville, in, in Delaware County, Garnet Valley, Rose Tree Media, and then also Springford up in Montgomery County. So there are many other districts that are working with Bus Patrol to enact this program, and really the crux of this and why we're excited is because it's going to enhance the safety of our students. Um, we've received, uh, concerns from our students that have seen this happen on their buses, and they've reached out to us as the administration and our school board, um, with their concerns, and we hope that this program that we're looking to implement will, will help, uh, with some of those fears that they have. So this is how the process works. The cameras are installed on the buses, and if a violation occurs, what triggers the cameras activating is when the red lights come on the buses and the arm is activated. That starts the cameras. They're high-definition cameras. It captures eight different angles from the top of the bus and on the side of the buses, those motorists that may be passing the bus illegally. So it's not doing any recording other than when the bus is stopped and the red light is on with the camera being extended, uh, I'm sorry, the arm being extended on the side where the camera is located. That data is sent, um, to Bus Patrol, um, through, um, through a network, and, um, they do a review on that. So they see, okay, um, was it's an actual violation that occurred or not? They'll do a vetting process with that. Um, and once they deem that a violation has occurred, they prepare an evidence package that's submitted to local law enforcement, so here to the local, uh, police department. They review that package, takes about one to two minutes per violation. Everything is compiled by Bus Control, all of the camera footage. They receive a notification that there's a violation waiting for the police department to review. Again, it takes about one to two minutes to review that. They give their, um, okay, uh, of, of the violation occurred, or will respond and say, we don't feel that this has occurred. They'll get back to Bus Patrol either way, and then Bus Patrol issues the citation, um, and does all of our customer service, and then that data is purged after ninety days. Um, it's kept just in case that there is a review that needs to take place further down the road, but the data is purged after a certain period of time. And what we're all asking tonight is, from the school district, we have two different agreements that come into play as part of this. We have a agreement with Bus Patrol, uh, for providing the equipment and the service, and we also have an intergovernmental agreement with the police department that allows those violations that are captured to come to them to review as part of the legislation that passed, and that's the mechanism of how this all works. So the local law enforcement involvement is reviewing the video package from a, a secure cloud portal, um, and then Bus Patrol mails the citation. So after the review, uh, the bulk of the work is done by Bus Patrol. Um, it can be contested, um, and we've looked at the data. We've talked to Bus Patrol through their data, uh, at other districts that have enacted this. I've talked to other school districts, uh, Methacton, Garnet Valley. Um, the number of citations that are actually challenged are, you know, less than three percent. Um, and really, with the cameras that are installed, um, it's, it's pretty evident that somebody passed the bus illegally. Once it goes through the vetting process, it's almost, uh, it's almost hard to challenge that evidence that the violation occurred, that somebody did pass a bus illegally. Um, so as part of this program, we're estimating that there'd be, uh, two hundred monthly citations to start with this system, and hopefully, as people become aware of this, that the repeat violations will, will go down as we go further along in this program. But based on the, the twenty-five dollar per citation payment of those two hundred, um, citations, we'd be installing these on sixty buses across our fleet. That could bring in five thousand dollars in revenue to the police department, and, um, that would go towards their time of reviewing these cases as they come up. Um, and we're estimating that based on that number at the three percent, there could be approximately six contested claims. Based on the anecdotal evidence from other school districts, we feel it will probably be less because of the evidence that's captured. So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, and thank you again for the time.
Great. Thank you very much. I do have a couple of questions. I'm sure other people do, so, uh, I'm going to start. Um, so the breakdown that you laid out as far as the two fifty to the school district, twenty-five to a fund, is that, um, as it's established in Act Thirty-eight, or is that
Yes.
a contractual?
It's part of the legislation.
Okay. And, um, are you, uh, is, is there one company in the region that's doing it? Um, are there other?
I believe there are other companies out that
Can you get to the mic?
Sorry. There are other companies out. Uh, as far as I know, in Pennsylvania, I, I think we're the only ones that are actually currently installing.
Okay. So, um, when the school district did, when you did your research, was it an RFP? Did you vet the company? Did the company approach you with the proposal? How did, how did we get to this, the school partnership?
Yeah, we didn't do an RFP because it wasn't necessarily required as part of being a professional service for the district and because there are so few companies doing that. We did vet Bus Patrol, um, through this process and talked to them, and it was kind of mutual. We saw the need, um, and coincidentally, we had a student letter that came in earlier this year, um, the, to our, our school board, uh, with concerns about this, and at the same time, our transportation director, myself, were looking into options, um, and, uh, had talked to Bus Patrol at our statewide conference in March and started the ball rolling and working with them on, on this program, and then just, again, talking anecdotally with other school districts that had been talking to Bus Patrol, um, or working with them, like Allentown School District, um, since twenty nineteen.
Um, I have, uh, I did a, a presentation to a, um, a local Boy Scout troop, and one of the ideas from one of our local Boy Scouts is that we should do something about, um, this issue. So, um, I love that the kids are thinking about it and seeing ways that, um, safety can be improved in their own lives and for their, uh, classmates and community. So, um, my last question, then I'll open it up to the rest, is, um, you mentioned that it's minimal amount of challenges, which would take some policing to address. Um, the ones that aren't challenged, are they paid, and how do you, um, sort of run down scofflaws who are not paying their tickets?
So as of right now, how the law is written is that the police department can file the uncontested and unpaid violations. So the, the police department go into their local court and file civilly against them as like a civil judgment, and any filing fees that, that takes, uh, Bus Patrol covers all those fees.
And do you see that, um, quite a bit, that people get these and just aren't paying them, regardless of what the
We
community does about it?
In, in
Do you see unpaid?
In Penn, in Pennsylvania, as of right now, there's a, there's a higher-than-normal percentage for the simple fact that we just got started. This is our first year with live. Uh, I believe the first program with Spring Grove went live at the end of, I want to say August. So we're still in that, in that, that beginning stage, so we don't really have a number of how many pay versus don't pay.
Okay. Thanks. Those are my questions. Commissioner Jones?
Do you actually ask for the questions?
Um, Commissioner Abel, do you have any questions?
Uh, I, I will, but, you know, Commissioner Farhey seemed like he had a lot, so I'm not
I don't know.
Okay. Um, so can you just walk through your numbers and how you got to your estimates of, I can't remember, was it two hundred?
Yeah, we were estimating at the start of the program, and again, it's based on nationwide data, um, that we received that information from. So it's, it's, uh, computed based on there's six, sixty school buses that we have that would have the cameras equipped and just the, um, the other anecdotal data that we've seen from other school districts, like, said, across the nation, um, that have implemented this program and the number of citations that they've seen. Um, I also corroborated the numbers with a counterpart down at, uh, Garnet Valley who enacted the program, and their numbers are similar based on their, their first few months of having the program in place.
Yeah, but, but right now, if, uh, if, uh, a vehicle passes a school bus, wouldn't the, wouldn't the bus driver make some sort of notation or call it in?
We do, but you're also, the, the bus driver's also making sure that the student coming on the bus is safe, so their focus is on their surroundings but also on that student. So we try to capture those as, as much as we can, but it's not a foolproof system where we, we capture all of them. This would help to facilitate that.
I mean, what, what do your numbers say within the township?
Uh, I don't have the data available, but I can get that to you.
Okay. I mean, those numbers seem high, um, for, for, for the local community. I, I'd like to think that two hundred residents aren't passing school buses in Radnor Township.
Well, also, remember, it's not just our residents.
No, I get it, but
It's people passing through, but
But
Yeah.
seven AM in the morning, um, you know, Radnor's not, there's parts of it that are a pass-through, but the majority of the township's not a pass-through community. Um, and then a, a question for the, for the chief or for the Radnor Police Department. You know, we, we've had discussions on resources. Um, I mean, are you guys able to take on this additional duty, and, um, where would this reside within the, the, the police force?
Commissioner, it is a concern of mine. Um, as you know, we've approached the board about our staffing levels. Uh, this is obviously a piece of technology that, you know, is on duty every time a bus door opens, so it, it is using technology to advance that. We're, we're going to have to pace this out. Sergeant Stanson, as, uh, in charge of the Highway Patrol Unit, is taking a look at the process and how this would work, and it would fall under that unit because they handle all of our traffic jobs, and they're generally available for court, so it doesn't generate overtime if they have to go, but we're, we're going to have to see how this goes because there, there is a lot of traffic on Lancaster Avenue, and I think we will see some solid numbers, in particular for some of those busy streets. Any four-lane highway is usually where we see a lot of driver confusion and running, uh, red lights.
So what, what's the timeframe that this would kick off?
So we're working with Bus Patrol now, and with, uh, the demand that they've seen from other school districts, we're in the queue to have the equipment installed, but we have had contact with them that we'd be looking to implement this probably sometime early in twenty twenty-three.
So, so Chief, based on that timeframe, are, are you prepared with resources to, uh, pick up the, the duties, um, you know, on the ticketing side, if, you know, and that's like if, with, with current staffing numbers?
Uh, we're going to have to make it work, and then if it, it becomes unbearable, I told the manager, we would brief him and, you know, come up with a situation where we, we would have a discussion or talk to the school district about supplementing us in some way to manage it if it becomes overbearing. Not doing it beforehand, this is new to us, new to them, so I, I don't want to say I'm not a hundred percent sure, but just it's an uncharted territory, how people interpret the citation civilly versus a normal vehicle code. The vehicle code violation is, uh, five points. It's the largest moving violation in the Commonwealth under the vehicle code. So this, this seems like it would be a lot more appealing.
And, and when you say, when, when you say supplement the township, what, what do you mean by that?
Just, just meaning how, how it would work as far as our, that it wouldn't, they wouldn't be challenging potentially as much. It's all theory-based.
No, no, no. No, I think my, my question is more, so if you're saying, you're, you know, we'll test it out, if the resources, if, if you're being challenged on resources, you would go back to the school district to supplement, I, I think you said to supplement the police department. What, what do you mean by supplement? Are we talking financially? So, or are we talking about, financially to, to bring on an additional resource?
Now, if we, if, if the workload got unbearable, we would have to talk to them about tuning that back so it would be more appropriate for our workload. So maybe they give us a percentage of the tickets. Again, not knowing how this is going to impact us because we haven't done it yet, um, you know, also the district justices are going to have to get used to this as well. It'll be a new feature for them. So there'll, there'll be a couple new curves to this, if you will, as we grow through it, you know, and I, I'm assuming in one year, we'll be able to take a good look at it and be able to give you a solid report how it impacts the department.
And one thing that we talked about, uh, through both of our solicitors is having a, an out, um, through the intergovernmental agreement with a six-month notice from, from your side of things. So if the, the citation challenge, um, becomes too much of a burden, that clause would be in the contract, and we were agreeable to that, but I think at that point, we would have a conversation on how we could, um, you know, ma- make it work, um, in the end, because, you know, we don't want to overutilize your resources, but we want to make sure, you know, if, if, we want this program to be successful. So, um, we would be okay if, you know, that would become, if the statistics are incorrect, and it does become a, a burdensome that we would revisit that and have that conversation.
So can you go back to the slide that shows the process, I think, where it's got most of the information?
Yeah, sure.
So it was my understanding when you were walking us through is that the citations do not come from the Radnor Police Department?
That's correct.
So we don't have the burden of mailing, oops, mailing citations that comes from the company?
Correct.
So really, the, the impact on the police department is for those who challenge it?
Yes.
Um, and you're estimating that at six a month or something?
A handful, yeah.
A handful. So other than that, it's all handled through the company itself, including sending the citations, giving the evidence to the driver. Um, so really, it's the, the police come into play when it's challenged.
Correct. So it's, it's the, you know, let's say it's, it's a minute per review, so for two hundred citations a month, two hundred minutes of time, and that's what that twenty-five dollar fee would help to, to defray some of that time spent.
Okay. I think that's the step I missed. So they review every citation. It just doesn't go without Radnor review, Radnor Police review. They look at the citations. They say, these all look good. You do the legwork to get the citations out. Um, okay, that's what I needed. Um, do you have other questions, Commissioner Abel? Commissioner Farhey?
Thanks. Um, so, quick question. So how much does it cost for each, um, bus to install one unit? What's the cost?
I, I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't work.
That's, okay.
Yeah, so as part of that, um, that two hundred and fifty-dollar citation fee, uh, we split that sixty-forty with Bus Patrol, um, and our portion goes to defray the equipment costs upfront. Their portion goes towards the monthly maintenance costs of that.
So that's, that's my point. I mean, I, I want to know how much it costs to put this on, what the split is. What you've told me, and I have two kids, I have a seven-year-old and a fifteen-year-old, so one's going to drive and one is in second grade. So I get the safety issue, and that's important to me. But my big concern, why I'd have a very difficult time voting for this, is this is a cash grab. I mean, it's, the township gets twenty-five dollars. Um, they may or may not have to do work. They may or may not have to go. The, the burden is on the township. The burden is on our police department for a very nominal fee, but that's not the issue. The issue is that it's, you're citing the person who owns the car, not the driver. You're not changing the bad behavior by citing, uh, you know, if it's, if my kid, my, you know, when my son drives, if he does it, I get fined. That doesn't change the behavior. Yes, I can talk to my son. Yes, I, I get that. But the issue is that it's like a red light camera on Roosevelt Boulevard. I get why they're there. I do. But then you have people stopping in the middle, in the middle of an intersection not to get this, and in some air, in some instances, it becomes more unsafe, and you're not changing the behavior. You're, because you're not citing the person that necessarily did this violation. And when you're saying, well, it's five thousand a month, and this, that, and the other, it's like, well, we can justify the cost. You're justifying the cost, but I'm not hearing how this is helping change anyone's behavior, per se. And that is my, my big concern, that, you know, and you can talk to, and in the past, this is not you, but there's those lock boxes outside of the buildings. It's a red light camera. It's just government with more cameras. Um, then this is a little broader, but again, it's this government with more cameras, more Big Brother, and I, I get why you want to have it because the technology is there, but again, it's a behavior issue. And instead of automatically citing someone for the ticket, why not automatically ping to the nearest police officer to go get the guy? That's why I think it's a cash grab, because if you pinged, if that generated a call to nine-one-one and said, yeah, there's a blue, uh, Ford, Ford Contour, this license plate just blew through Lowry's, I get it. That's great. Go after him. You're just trying to get money. So, and I'm not saying that that's the punishment, but it's, you're trying to get money, and I'm more focused on changing behaviors so a kid doesn't get hit and die.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Those are my comments.
Any other questions? Any other questions or comments from, oh, would you like to respond?
Um, no, I mean, I think some of the concerns are valid, but also they're the parameters that we have to work within. This was established by the legislature, not the Radnor Township School District or Bus Patrol. So those are the options that we have available, uh, to us to help with our, you know, student safety. Thank you.
That, and in, in other states, they have done, uh, studies on recidivism rate. And it was 98% of those vehicle owners who received a violation did not receive a second one.
And to your point, I think that the behavior changes when the owner of the vehicle gets a citation and they are mad, you know, and they talk to the person who's driving, whether it's their child and that's a teachable moment, um, or someone using their car, right? So, um, I think it's a really good program, something in need. I have seen people blow through, uh, the arm down and maybe they didn't realize it or maybe they're a new driver, but it's definitely something that I can see, you know, tapering back on that type of vehicle, um, behavior.
As far as you were saying, numbers, how many people pass one, or I don't see it that often. I did a little over 26 years on a str- I'm sorry. I did a little over 26 years on a street as a police officer. And that was one of my, all police, those, police officers have like their, their little niche things they will do during the day. And, and one of mine was, uh, school bus safety. So I knew where the stops were. I knew what time different school, uh, buses ran certain different routes. And I would monitor those stops and monitor those school buses. And, yeah, I saw it occasionally, but guess what? They also saw the marked car. They saw the un, they know what unmarked police cars look like. And if you stop one, well, then everybody else sees that the police officer is now busy and everybody else can run it. I was amazed when I got this job and started seeing the videos. And, and even the state police who, uh, are approving for across the state have stated the number of times that somebody passes a school bus is absolutely amazing. And we watched these videos and, you know, I was blown away, even after 26 years of being, uh, in a patrol car.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I guess maybe I'm, I'm trying to, I, I, I hope people are thinking and being smarter on the road than, than to pass a bus. But, you know, I'm not out there every day and, and, and watching. Uh, hopefully, hopefully the data does not prove out to be 200 a month. But, but I do have, uh, just a couple more questions, uh, based on some of the comments. So is the first offense an automatic fine?
It is.
I mean, to, to Sean's point, you know, is, so a, a new driver who may or may not be paying attention, you know, this is a learning opportunity. There's no warning for that first offense for, for a young driver?
Um, it, it's not subjective as if it's, an officer would stop and would, you know. But, you know, my personal opinion is, you know, if, if you're passing a school bus, you know, you're not just maybe jeopardizing yourself, you're jeopardizing students.
I agree.
And so, you know, I, I haven't, I haven't been on the job, so I can't speak to the allowance and the leeway for that. So, but in this case, it, there, it would issue the citation.
And, and it also helps other, we had another school district, uh, western part of the state, and they were just in the beginning processes in installing the cameras. Uh, had, the program hadn't gone live yet. They actually did catch on those cameras a kid who was hip and both of his legs are broken. So they were able to use that video. So, I mean, it, it, it happens a lot more. And if you talk to a school bus driver, they'll tell you it happens a lot more frequently than. So it's, and it's also used for other things, such as that one where there was a crash and, you know, a, a child was injured. So that, that video footage is also useful for that.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate the, the insight and the, the conversation. My, my next question is to the president. What, what's, what are we accomplishing tonight? Like, what, what are, what are, what are you looking for from the board?
Yes, so, um, this will require a vote of the board. Um, the school district asked us to put it, put it on this agenda tonight for a vote. I didn't think we were ready for that because I hadn't heard about it.
Yeah.
So I, I, this is just a presentation, a discussion. Um, it, it will come on a future agenda for a vote.
So is there, is there any way that we could, I, I think to, to some of the comments, have a six-month trial just to see how this works and plays out? And then come back and, and, and have a, a, a vote for, for like the full program?
So it's my understanding that the negotiations have already happened at the school district level, correct? And we were kinda your final step?
Yeah, so we, we worked out the agreement, I'm sorry, with, with Bus Patrol. And so, um, yeah, so we, we had discussed through the solicitors, having the opt-out at any time. Again, hopeful that this would continue through the five years that we'd have the agreement with Bus Patrol in place. Our concern would be more for their side of things, um, just because of the time and the investment of putting all of that equipment on our school buses. If we would do a trial upfront without seeing how it would go, you know, we could be limiting that, having them to come back out, um, to re, you know, to uninstall all of the equipment.
So if, so, so, understood. So if we do pass this, can we request the school district come back in six months and brief us on the program and, and the data it's collected?
I'd be happy to, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I, I have, uh, just, yeah, one more question. And then concern too. Cause you said, you're saying like you, meaning the driver, but it's not the driver. It's the owner of the vehicle. Again, so like, if you can reconcile the owner of the vehicle versus the user, uh, I'm, I'm on board. And I would like to hear the, the, the chief's opinion on this. Because if we do this, then shouldn't we have red light cameras all throughout the, chief, all throughout the township and pretty much, I mean, you name it, at a stop sign? I see people blow stop signs. I see people blow traffic lights. That's where we're headed. We're headed toward a camera. If we're gonna have a camera here, we should have a camera everywhere. We shouldn't be picking, yeah.
Well, I think.
You shouldn't be, no, no, let me, let me, I'm, I'm, no.
I think that that's not a, a logical.
I, I do, and I would like to hear what the chief has to say to this.
We get to choose and if this is one we like.
No, but, but, but if we're doing, alright, but I'm.
And others are.
Okay, that's, please.
That's how it works.
Please don't interrupt. So, um.
Could you please be concise?
I'm being very concise, but when you interrupt me, it's difficult to finish my thought because you interrupt and I have to start over again. Chief, so I'm just curious, your feelings on this? And then, um, is this something that would open up the township to having red light cameras?
My answer is no. The, the red light cameras are special legislation. You have to go through a process to get them. There has to be a, a specific need. As we know, Roosevelt Boulevard is known as the most dangerous highway. Um, and they were able to get through those through special legislation from the state. Right now, we're not eligible for that. There's grants. You have to hire staff. There has to be a whole list of reasons why. So I don't think this ties together with that. And there's a, a special process which I could investigate more. Uh, you know, I'm not an expert on red light cameras, so we would have to look into that. But I know that it is a, there are certain criteria you have to make and that has to be legislatively approved from the state. So I think this is an individual issue. I hope I'm answering your question.
And, and this legislation was specific to school districts and school bus cameras?
Would you have a first-time warning? Is that something that you would consider?
I don't believe the legislation would allow for that, but I can check on that for you.
So that is something that I would be possibly able to vote for if, because it is not to the driver. The driver, it's to the owner of vehicle, where the owner of vehicle can see. And if there's a picture of an image in the car and it's a kid or themselves, they may not know. But there should be, if not a grace period, a first-time warning. And that's probably something that I could live with. So if you do wanna amend that legislation, it's probably something I.
Well, I may not be able to amend the legislation, but I can get some clarification on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
This will be on a future agenda and I hope you took some notes of what some of these questions were and we'll have you back.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that, um, moves us on to, um, appointments to boards and commissions. Uh, tonight, we have three candidates, um, for appointment. Woo Kim to the Planning Commission for a four-year term. Carol Jane, Environmental Advisory Council, to fill an unexpired term ending on December 31st, 2024. And Bob Stevens, uh, for Carfac for a four-year term. Uh, is there any, uh, comment from commissioners on any of these candidates? And, um, is there anyone who wants to speak to either, any of these candidates from the public? I'll ask for a motion to appoint the three candidates to the boards and commission.
So moved.
In a second?
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor, say aye. Thanks very much. So we are moving to, um, a part of the agenda tonight where we are going to hear from candidates who are interested in filling the vacancy of the, uh, Fourth Ward Commissioner, Lisa Barowski, who, uh, resigned at the last meeting to go on and represent us at the state level. We did hear from, uh, one person, um, who is here tonight. And I'd like to invite, um, uh, Jim Riley up to speak to us. We're gonna ask you some questions, ask you, um, what your, um, interest in the position are. And I'm looking around the room to see if we maybe have any other candidates. Before you, um, start, Mr. Riley, I'd like to make sure that there's, is there anyone else in the audience tonight who is here to throw their hat in the ring for the position? I am not seeing any, so we are gonna, um, take a few minutes. If you wouldn't mind, um, introducing yourself to the board. Talk a little bit about, um, why you are interested in the position and the appointment. And then I'm gonna open it up to, um, my colleague commissioners to ask you some questions, if that's okay.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
And, um, just so that everybody can hear and can hear you, um, uh, at home, please just make sure that the mic is somewhere close to you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm basically just gonna read the letter that I sent in to the township. Yeah, uh, I'm, uh, Jim Riley. I live at 9 Meadowwood Road, um, in the Fourth Ward. I was fortunate to grow up in Radnor and have been educated in Radnor schools, received a mechanical engineering from Villanova. I raised my family in Radnor with my wife for 30 years. Our children enjoyed Radnor schools and all are now out of college and working full-time. I work well with others and have been on multiple boards in Radnor. I was a president of Radnor Wayne Little League for seven years, member of the Radnor Athletic Association for seven years. For 15 years, I was board member at Conne Soga Swim Club, twice as president. In 2007, I was a member of an ad hoc facilities committee for Radnor School District. That's the time where we were charged with give grass field a chance at Radnor Middle School. Uh, the poss, and the possible installation of artificial turf field at another location, which became Radnor High School's football field. I've also spent the majority of my professional career in Radnor. For many years, I was a small business owner here. However, 10 years ago, I changed careers to become a teacher at Hilltop Preparatory School in Rosemont. I teach advanced math and physics. I also coached three sports at the school, um, head of the science department. I am excited about the potential of being selected onto the Board of Commissioners. I'm hoping that my background will help me and my experience as well. And I've had so many amazing opportunities at this township, I just wanna give back. So that's why I'm asking to be selected.
Thank you very much. Thank you for stepping up to, um, ask to serve your community. I would like to open it up to questions. Commissioner Myers, can you start?
Hi, welcome. If you were selected, which probably will be, um, would you be interested in running again for another term in May or whenever the primary is?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Sure, yeah, I have a couple. Your resume is impressive and thank you for wanting to fill in the role. So that is, I, I don't have an issue if you decide that you wanna run or you don't wanna run in an appointment, um, to, there's a learning curve involved with becoming commissioner. And I will speak that I've probably been through the most vacancy hearings on this board. Uh, I was appointed initially and then I ran to fill out the term. So, uh, my feeling is if this is something that you want and to continue, that's fine. The people will get the, the chance to vote. But why have someone go through two learning curves? Yours, a teacher, you would probably know that. What are things that you would see? Cause if you're looking, not now, but also in the future, to fill out the remaining three years, um, what, what are some things that you're looking, uh, to do for your ward and for the township? What's right, what's wrong, what needs help?
Yeah, so it's a fourth ward. I, I like the things that Lisa did, so I'm trying to continue what she's, she had been doing along with Elaine before her. I've lived in the Fourth Ward for over 40 years and I've also lived in the Seventh Ward. In the Fourth Ward, one of the biggest things is the, uh, the Blue Route goes through the Fourth Ward. And there's, there's noise pollution from that. They have sound barriers. Truthfully, I don't like those sound barriers. I think they just ricochet the sound off of it. There might be newer things that might work better for, for that. Um, I'm also involved a lot in, in the environment, both at, at school and also been doing township things for many years, cleanups and stuff.
So you'd wanna work with Pendott or whomever with sound barriers? And, um, and, and so that's one of the things that you see, which is good. It's fine. It's, it's, it's good. It's not like stormwater or this or that.
Yeah, no, yes, stormwater I was involved with for the middle school a long time.
You'll, you'll get enough of that, but something like that, that's, that's where your eyes are on. Okay, and, so it's good. Just one point of, um, I guess, uh, clarification. We're not voting tonight on him. We are, we have 30.
Yes, we are.
Why don't we have 30 days? Cause with Kathy Agnew, um, we, it was a 30-day.
So we have to do it within 30 days. So when, uh, when Commissioner Barowski resigned on the 28th, we have the, till the 28th of this month. So, yes, we will vote and if he.
All right, well, let me, let me just say this.
Is appointed, we will swear him in and he can come join us on the dais tonight.
Okay, let me just say something about this. So Bill Ga, um, I reached out to Bill on Friday. Was that correct, Bill? And asked for a name. And you said no one was, or you just got a name on Friday. I didn't get the name till Monday. So this is nothing against you, but shouldn't the public have more than? Cause I didn't find out till Saturday night. So I've had less than 72 hours. The public has not seen his resume. We were, um, or know anything that he was even going to run. You asked at the, when we made these appointments just now, you're like, does anyone in the public wanna say anything about these people? And now you're not allowing the public to say anything, good or bad, for him. So if we have a meeting next, uh, if we have a meeting next week, we should at least have seven days for the public to vet this name.
So this is an appointment, not an election? Although I, I value public opinion.
Apparently not.
This is not. This is an appointment by the Board of Commissioners and the public.
It's an appointment for six months. This guy's gonna be representing them.
At the special election in May to determine if they would like, um, this candidate to continue.
No, this is, this is, you seem very qualified. The process is flawed. This is a cramped job. I did not know his name until Saturday night and the public did not know his name. There is no vetting. There is zero transparency. Zero, zero, zero transparency. You're qualified. I would vote for you. I don't have a problem with that. It's, the, the, the problem is with this board that there is zero transparency of getting his name out, especially if there's another meeting next week or you need to call another meeting so the public can vet this and to at least give other people more time to come and to see. So there's a, a better pool. This is, this is, this was done, you know what? It's a double standard what, what's happened with, with Kathy. It's absolutely, absolutely zero, zero, zero transparency.
If you give me a second, I will ask for a sense of the board. The plan had been articulated that we would take candidates tonight. The plan had been articulated that we would take candidates tonight. It was publicly presented on the website. Some of the commissioners put the word out through social media and newsletters, and Lisa Barowski's leaving the board was a very, very public process, because she was elected to another place. So we had articulated that anyone who wanted to be considered should present their candidacy by emailing Bill White.
That's not the issue, the issue is the public.
We have also made space tonight that if anyone came in, it was on the agenda that it was tonight. I mean, I'm not sure we're, I mean, you know, we've put it out there, and just waiting other weeks for more, you know, there's just no one has, no one but this gentleman has indicated any interest in serving in this position.
That's, that's, that's fine, and that's fine, but if we have a meeting next week, it won't hurt to have his name vetted. If you're going to talk about transparency-
I'm going to ask for a sense of the board.
Could I?
Yes, before I do that.
It's just a double standard with what happened with Kathy.
I'd just like to address the contention that this is something different than what happened the last time around, which is not at all my recollection or correct. In fact, the reason that we had an additional period of time for Commissioner Agnew is because the board failed to reach a majority on the first vote. We then waited however many days it was until we had the vacancy board, and we came back and had a second vote when we achieved the majority. But we'll either have a majority tonight, in which case we will have done exactly what we did for Commissioner Agnew, just we won't have to go through the additional step of a vacancy board, or we won't, in which case we'll have the vacancy board chair and panel, we'll work as a vacancy board, and we'll do exactly the same thing we did with Commissioner Agnew.
That's, that's not true, number one, because we had a meeting, and then the next day or two, we had another meeting on the first vote, because you wanted to give a full 30 days, Jack. I, I completely remember that, you wanted to give a full 30 days. And we had, we had a vacancy board meeting like the next day after the other meeting, and it was done on Zoom. I clearly, clearly, clearly remember that. So you're just putting, you're just, you're just trying to gaslight me, and it is unbelievable the double talk that is coming out of your mouth right now. Yeah. It's not okay.
There were three candidates last time, too.
It doesn't matter what, if you're going to put the name of an appointment for planning or whatever on an agenda, why wasn't his name on an agenda? I mean, this is an issue about transparency, you can't-
Because this was an open call for as many people who wanted to come out tonight to put their name up for consideration and vote, were asked and welcome to do so. We have one really qualified candidate who has, not only did he show up tonight, but he indicated his interest, the way that we ask people to do, which is, you vote ahead.
It's a transparency issue, it is a transparency issue, and this board is failing on that.
When was the, when was the applicant's, or when was the candidate's resume posted to the agenda, or was it?
No, it wasn't, it was not.
It wasn't, because we didn't know if there were other candidates, so tonight was the night to vet our candidate.
Can I just, I mean, what hap, everyone knows the agenda has to be posted on Wednesday. This gentleman, it's my understanding, didn't submit his application until after the agenda had been posted, either Thursday or Friday. Thursday, when that came in. So, you know, once the agenda gets posted, it's, it's posted. We can't add something like this to it. So that's, that's your issue, Sean, I mean, that, you're not going to amend the agenda over the weekend and add someone's name, who's the only person that's applied for the position.
Agendas get amended all the time, and if that's the case, then why not wait a week, as we've done in the past? Again, it's a transparency issue. You're qualified, Mr. Riley, you'd have my vote, that's not the issue. The issue is transparency. What are we telling, what are we telling the people of, of Ward Four?
So, so a question to the President, are, are we planning to have a meeting next week?
Yes, we have the second meeting of December is next week because of the winter holidays.
Yeah, typically that meeting is canceled if there's, if there's no agenda, so I-
We have not prepared the agenda for it.
So is there, is there-
And I, I don't have a sense yet if there are pressing needs for that.
So we usually vote this meeting, whether we're going to have a, a second meeting in December, and it's usually canceled. So are we planning to hold a meeting next week?
I'd forgotten that, I'd love to cancel that next meeting, I mean, you're not talking me into delaying this any.
No, 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 and that's fine.
If, if we were going to ca, I mean, if, logistically, if we were going to cancel next meeting, and we don't have the votes tonight to approve this candidate, we would have to call a special meeting, because we need to do it with by the, before the end of this month, or we are outside of the 30-day window.
Yeah, and maybe this is just a lesson's learned for, for next time. The candidate's application has to be in by the Wednesday, otherwise it has to wait till the following meeting.
Yeah, and it said Friday, the posting said Friday.
The posting said Friday, and we also, if, you know, four of our, our community members who are sitting in the audience tonight all wanted to throw in their hats, they would have been permitted to come up and speak to the board. I did not want to put a deadline on getting candidates if up until 7:30 tonight, somebody wanted to make a decision, I really wanted to keep it open as long as possible. But extending it another week, nobody has shown up except for Mr. Riley.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just saying, you know, maybe a lesson's learned, next time we, we set a deadline, that way everything's posted, it's public. If, if, if applications come in after that deadline, it, it would have to wait till the next meeting, which usually falls within the 30-day window. But to Sean's point, I, you know, the gentleman in front of us followed the rules, seems to be qualified, and I, you know, I'm not, I don't think we need to wait either. You know, there's been a week, nobody's come forward, and we have a vacant seat that we should move to fill tonight.
Okay, so I did say I was going to ask for a sense of the board, thank you, Commissioner Abel, for that. Commissioner Jones, do you feel like we should move forward tonight?
I do feel like we should move forward. Mr. Riley, thank you so much for stepping up. You are more than qualified to be appointed tonight, and, you know, you definitely have a propensity towards service, which I commend, and I would vote to appoint you tonight.
Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I agree, I, I agree a little bit with Sean, that it would have been nice to get his name out there, just in case somebody in the fourth ward wanted to come forward and say something negative about you, or, or wanted to come and say something positive about you. But I don't think we need to wait. I think we could appoint you tonight.
Commissioner Farhi, I think I know how you feel.
No, I, I think he's qualified, I'll, I'll-
I'll vote for him, but I just, I think that it's a transparency issue, and that's what I don't like. I got a name on Saturday, Saturday night, I got your name, okay? So that's the issue that I have. To me, it's a transparency issue, period, and I don't like it.
Commissioner Larkin?
It's a bad message.
There's a lot of stirring and drumming about nothing, this is fine.
Okay, I will, Commissioner Abel, thank you for saying lessons learned. I will say to you, Commissioner Farhi, lesson learned. I do not see, logistically, any reason to wait, simply because we have a qualified candidate. We had as much publication as we could for this, and as we've all agreed, I think he's quite qualified, and it's an appointment with the opportunity for the community in Ward Four to make a different decision than the commissioners come May at the special election, if they so choose. Hopefully, that won't happen to you, but you do have to run in May in a special election, which would then allow you to, you wouldn't run in the general, you would then fulfill the three years remaining on Commissioner Barowski's term, but, so, thank you for the good discussion. I think we all heard it loud and clear, but I am going to ask for a motion to nominate Jim Riley as the fourth ward commissioner.
I will say so moved.
Thank you, and a second.
Second.
Is there any public comment? Anyone want to speak to this issue? Mr. Riley, can you step aside and Mrs. Pilling to the mic?
Are you sure you want this, Jim?
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. I had the opportunity for several, more than several years, to work with Jim, because the girls' baseball was on Emlyn Towne Field, which is in the middle of a neighborhood, so it can become pretty sticky at times. And Jim was always available, came to the field often to check on the equipment, because part of the problem is they'd break the locks and open all the equipment containers, and there would be equipment all over the field, or it was being stolen, or et cetera. I never found Jim anything but affable, supportive, and willing to try and connect, correct a problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any others? So I will call the vote, all in favor of Jim Riley as the new fourth ward commissioner, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Unanimously appointed.
Thank you.
We're going to swear you in, I'm going to come down and swear you in. Oh, let me get the, why don't I come over here? We do have a Bible. Come right here, I have to read it. Not the Bible. Is this on? Yes, hi. So please repeat after me, the oath of office for the commissioner of the Township of Radnor. I, James?
I, James.
I, James Riley, I was questioning, can I call you James or Jim? Okay. I, Jim Riley.
I, Jim Riley.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend.
I do, solemnly swear to support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Home Rule Charter.
And the Home Rule Charter.
Of Radnor Township.
Of Radnor Township.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of Commissioner of Radnor Township with fidelity.
Of Commissioner of Radnor Township with fidelity.
You are so sworn in.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's not a shelf, is it? I dropped the Bible. I'm so sorry, I thought it was a shelf. Well, that was an exciting part of the meeting, thank you all, very excited to have a full Board of Commissioners. We will move to ordinance 2022-31, adoption, establishment of ward boundaries required by Charter Section 2.03A, typically referred to as redistricting. Can I get a, a motion, please?
Is it reappraisalation?
This is a reappropriation.
Yes.
Commonly known as redistrict-
Reapportionment.
There you go.
That's, reapportionment.
Let's get it right.
Let's get it right, exactly. Thank you for that correction, and do I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
Excellent. We have discussed this issue at some public meetings were held. We were led by our, our expert consultant through the process. We voted to introduce the ward boundaries that were option B2, the map has been on the website noted as the one that was voted for an introduction, and so tonight would be the adoption of our new ward boundaries. Before I put this to a vote, I'd like to ask our solicitor to please explain the process that comes next with the courts.
Yes, and just before I do that, Amanda Holt, who's the township's consultant, is here, and she provided me with an email this afternoon. There's two, there's a map, there's a plain English description of the map, and then there's a technical description of the map. So there's, in the plain English description, there's one minor error. It incorrectly lists Newtown and Radnor Chester Road as a boundary where it should be Conestoga to West Lancaster, and so that's in the English description. In the technical description, there's a zero missing from one of the census blocks for Ward Seven. So with those two really minor, minor edits, once the board approves this ordinance, the next step is for this to be, I will send a certified copy of the ordinance to the Board of Elections. Board of Elections then reviews it and ultimately approves this, and then puts it in front of a judge at the Court of Common Pleas. And then, that's an advertised, well, it's not advertised, but it'll be a public hearing in front of one of the judges. I think the Board of Elections may hold one or two sessions themselves publicly, and I'm just going on what happened last time in 2014 when this was done. And then, once the, the court approves it, there's a court order entered, that gets sent to the state, and then there's a process that the state goes through in terms of the voter rolls and, and things like that. There's also an opportunity, in terms of the precincts after this happens, to present some additional information to the Board of Elections. But this ward reapportionment is first, sort of outside the precinct process. Once the ordinance is adopted, and then the Board of, the Board of Elections approves it. So I expect to have this to them within the next week or so. It's the holidays, I'm not sure how busy they are, the Boards of Elections around the state seem to be very busy these days. I have sent a email to Lorene Hagan, who's the executive director, whether any of the processes have changed, I haven't heard back from her. I think they're the same, they have the same published guidelines that they had eight years ago. So that's the process. Last time, my recollection, it went relatively smoothly. I don't know whether there is issues with the precincts, but I don't know that there's any major, major changes here. The populations are within the, the variance, I think you can go up to 10% under the applicable law, and from the mapping, you can see that the variance from mean for all the wards is less than 5%. And Amanda's here, if there's any questions, any other questions on this?
Thank you, just a quick question before I turn it over to the other commissioners. Based on your understanding from last year and the timing where we are now, do you expect that these would be the maps in play for our next election, starting with the primary in May?
I, I believe so, yes.
Commissioner Abel?
Just to go off your timeline, and John, appreciate the walkthrough on, on the process going forward. The, the discussion on the precincts is important, we've got a May primary. Can you estimate, when do you think we'll be able to make suggestions on those precinct lines? I, I assume we're going to have a few changes, and we, we've got to get word out to those residents to make sure that they are going to the appropriate precinct, and, and those voting locations are probably going to change as well for some- as well for some locations.
I mean, again, it's a Board of Election issue. And I would think right after the new year, you know, that information, there should be somebody, I assume from each party, involved in communicating with the Board of Elections in terms of precincts. We were a little bit earlier, eight years ago, nine years ago, when we did this, maybe 30 days. It was done in November, not December. The ordinance was adopted and sent. But I think there's plenty of time for this to happen. I think in January, early January is when you want to...
So those suggestions for precinct boundaries wouldn't come from this board? It would come from the political parties?
I don't believe it. I don't believe it came from the board last time.
But it can this time, right? Why wouldn't we want to make that influence?
Yeah, I think that we'd probably want to ask for polling places and boundary lines. I would love to see if we could find a way to, if the board is okay with it, chop the third ward into three different precincts and have both the new 3-3 and both sort of wards that are, or both precincts that are relevant to Villanova all vote in the same location, which would then solve Villanova's problem. They would be in three different wards, but their students would be showing up at the same building to vote, which is all they really want. You're blinking.
But we could get rid of 2-3 at the same time. Ah, we could get rid of 2-3 at the same time.
Agreed.
It's going to be a 7-3, basically. It'll be 7-1, 7-2, and then the 7-3, which will be the kids that live in the dorms. They will go vote on Villanova.
I'm not opposed to doing it that way. That's not really the conversation tonight, but we could.
Well, that's, yeah, that's the issue, that you should have all of the Villanova college students that vote or that are registered to vote and want to vote vote in somewhere on the campus. So if Villanova is in three wards, well, two of them are going to be, have to walk out of their ward. So let's say it's at the pavilion or something. Then obviously, two of them are going to have to walk out of their wards to get there. But they should all be at Villanova. There should be three separate precincts, at least in seven or if, or wherever a dorm is. I don't know, I don't know the wards that have Villanova students.
It's 2, 7, and 3.
So then 2, 7, and 3 should all have three precincts. And the third precinct, which are the Villanova precinct, should be on campus there. That's fine. As long as it's done that way. But a lot of the people were, I am, they walk to the polls, both 7-1 and 7-2. And they're not going to like the fact that they get rerouted. As long as there's a third precinct in seven, that's fine.
Doesn't bother me. That's fine.
So I guess I'm unclear. Are we going to main, should we maintain the committee made up of board members to continue the conversation into the next step of going from ward down to precinct and make that recommendation as well?
Looking for reasons to stay away from my kids at night.
You know this is televised, right?
I would think so. Last time, it was done by the county, I believe. We didn't offer any precinct recommendations. But we were the only people, they said, you know, only township in the or area.
My recollection is John Nagel was actively involved in this after the fact with the precincts. And Amanda may have some additional information on precincts, if she's willing to share.
So the timeline's a little tight because they, when the Department of State reviews all of this, they have to put it into the voter system, the new precinct boundaries, and notify everyone what their new polling place is going to be. So they like to do that, they ask for like two to three weeks to do that before like the petition circulation period starts. And that normally is in like mid-February. So this is happening very, very quickly, if you will, that a recommendation would need to be made. I mean, it's fine to make a recommendation. I mean, the county, when they're making voting precincts, you got to remember, these are not to be necessarily equal population. The purpose of these is to facilitate ease of voting. That's what voting precincts are for. And there are some different rules. You're looking at sometimes voter registration numbers when you're making voting precincts because you're looking to facilitate ease of voting, which may not mirror the population of the census blocks and things like that. So it's certainly fine. There's some rules that they have to follow, which I won't get into right now. But there is a tight deadline on this. I just want to emphasize that they are moving along, if you will.
Would the board then have the appetite to ask you, Ms. Holt, to ask you today to begin the process of drafting precinct boundaries for us with the guidelines that we want as few people to move as possible, except that as many students at Villanova and as few others as possible would be able to vote at a single location on Villanova's campus? Then we could schedule, hopefully, two meetings as a small group with you in early January? And then we'll have two meetings as a board at the end of January and early February to meet that deadline?
I think you have me do it earlier than that. I mean, you're looking at like mid-January. You're going to need to have something because they're wanting to get the notification out to voters. I don't think you have quite as much time as you think. I don't have the exact date for the petition circulation starting. I can't remember exactly when that is.
We can work on timelines afterwards. Sounds like we're going to be working Christmas.
Amanda, just a quick question. How hard is it to take the boundaries of Villanova's campus and then to, so you have whatever land they own, and then look at what's in Ward 7 or Ward 2 or Ward 3? And then have a central meeting point, maybe at the pavilion or somewhere in one of the new student centers where they can come and vote? Is that difficult to do? Or is that, it seems like it'd be pretty...
Well, if it's Villanova's...
It's certainly possible to take, you know, the portion that's now, assuming you all approve, the boundaries have been proposed, that you could take the portion, that the largest portion of Villanova campus is now going to be in Ward 2. And you can certainly create a, you know, voting precinct there. You'd have to look at the other areas just to make sure they comply with some of the rules about voting precincts because there's like a minimum number of voters you have to have, like in a voting precinct. There's a range they look at. But yeah, that certainly could be a starting point. And working with Villanova, I think they expressed during the meetings that they're very willing to work with the county to provide a polling location that's suitable and meets the criteria for polling locations that the county has and that the state has. So I don't see that there would be necessarily roadblocks there in moving along in that direction because that seems like the primary goal is here to make sure that there is a polling location in the next cycle at Villanova, if I'm hearing correctly.
And that would make all the wards that have some attachment to the Villanova campus, they would all have a third precinct, correct?
Well, that's what you would have to review to just ensure that there's sufficient population. Like they mentioned that there's only, I think, 46 students that live in Ward 3 as proposed. I don't think the county would consider it appropriate to make a polling location specifically for 46 students. That's too small, let alone, I mean, who knows? They're all registered to vote, for example.
They have about 12 people that vote.
Yeah.
But I don't know how many are registered to vote.
I mean, 2-3 is really low numbers.
There may have been Eastern students that just haven't voted in the last couple of elections that are registered to vote, that they allowed that.
Yes. And it could be, I mean, we certainly could ask, make the recommendation. They can always say no. But I'm just, you know, saying that it's not common to have a polling place just for 46 people. So you have to ask and see.
And they may not all be registered to vote. So maybe 26 people or 15.
Yes, exactly. So it's not common, but it's certainly worth asking. And I will say, you will find these things, like in congressional districts, which you don't necessarily deal with here. But some of them are carved out. Even in like my area, some of the school districts only have a little portion. And so some of the precincts are having to have two ballots at them because they aren't all in the same place. So they're, in a sense, almost having two polling places there. But we could certainly ask the question and see for the smaller populations if they would accommodate that.
Well, that's something that if there is not, for if that's too small students at Villanova, maybe could have a bus that could take students. You'd have to work with the league.
Sure.
Those students via a bus to wherever that precinct.
Or we could just have some other people who voted at the Villanova campus. I mean, or we could just have some other residents who voted at Villanova's campus. I mean, I voted at the senior center, but I'm not a member of the senior center. It's not a big ask for me.
Well, so the issue that I have is, it's just funny because when we were in COVID, I know Ward 7 was looking for a place where the residents could walk to in 7-1 and in 7-2. And Villanova was asked, and they said that they didn't want to do it. And COVID was one of the reasons, but they just didn't want to do it because of parking and whatnot. And now they seem very willing to do it. So to me, that kind of, I'm shrugging my shoulders like I don't understand. So if that is the case, then the residents, the bulk of the residents in 7-1 are not Villanova's students. And they want to be able to go to, I don't know. Maybe they do want to walk to the gym. I don't know. I mean, that's something that my residents would have to be asked. One more thing, John. What was the thing with 7? You said there was one admission? There was an admission on the sheet with 7? What the?
I missed a zero. It should say 2,000 and not 200 in the technical description on 7. It was a very minor thing, a little typo. Yes. Nope. There you go. Yep. Good to clarify.
Just got to advocate for my residents.
That's right. No one was, no one was cut short, just a little zero.
All right. Thanks.
So I'm hearing a couple of things. First of all, Amanda, I want to thank you for everything that you've done for us, gotten us this far. It's really been amazing work. And now I'm going to ask for a sense of the board if we can perhaps maybe get you a little bit longer. So I would like to know from my colleagues if you're comfortable continuing to engage Ms. Holt to help us through the precinct lines. What else do you need to know? I think so. How does that feel to everybody? Continue to engage her? Move really quickly to hit this deadline?
Just ask the people in 7 if they don't mind walking to, maybe the, if you are going to move it to the gymnasium, I just want to know that my residents are going to be okay with that. The parking bay is probably going to be better at Villanova than at the Radnor House. But I just want my residents to have some input and say in this decision, as well as whatever Villanova decides, if they want to have it wherever. I just don't want my residents to get, to have to vote outside of their ward.
I see.
That's it.
So just to clarify, I will help facilitate making a recommendation, but I won't, I will not be deciding where everyone. So yeah, I'll just be facilitating making the recommendation, but certainly can include those thoughts in the recommendation that's made with the consent of the board.
Thanks. And I think that once the precinct lines are drawn with great consideration to keep as many polling places the same, to reduce confusion. But if, you know, if a polling place doesn't adequately support the new precincts, it is, we are able to move polling places if we can find access to other spaces. It's not easy. So I would like to, you know, as much as possible to not disenfranchise voters who may not know that it got changed. So I think we're, if we are pushing so quickly to hit an early deadline, perhaps we use next Monday night for a redistricting meeting rather than a board meeting. Yeah.
So, I mean, that's kind of, it's actually a good, a good recommendation. So we're going to try to squeeze in two subcommittee meetings? Just so I'm clear, two subcommittee meetings? And then have a recommendation by the first official meeting in January?
I think it might have to be...
I think it might be one meeting.
Okay.
You know, you've done all the work. It's, you know, it's there. And I trust that Amanda will quickly get you through all the meetings. So I would hope that we can do it in one. If we can't, I want it right, not fast. But it does feel to me that we've got some pressure on us and we are so close that I'd like to push as hard as we can. So if you have one public meeting next Monday and then, you know, some advice and counsel from our consultant to then come and bring it to the first, if necessary, the second meeting in January.
Okay.
We'll be pushing it, but if it's the best we can do.
And then the township will notify, like, an entity like Villanova since they were engaged throughout the process to make sure that they will be here next week?
They watch our meetings every night. I'm very confident they're listening to us.
But yes.
I'm going to say right now.
I think that they should, we should have some outreach and invite them. I would ask to, you know, publicize this public meeting as much as we can and get as many people out to continue the conversation.
Good. Okay.
If that sounds like a plan, I would like to open it up for public comment.
So we're not voting on B2? I'm sure we are.
We will, but I'm opening it for public and then the vote.
Okay.
Sarah Pillings, 29 Garrett Avenue. As a resident who votes at 7-1, it is in the Rosemont Plaza Apartments, not Radnor House. There is very little parking there. Most people who vote in that precinct walk there because it's a nice, tight area. I don't see them walking to Villanova's campus. And parking up there is not easy. This, to give you a little bit of background, I worked on Obama's campaign for 2008. My entire volunteer effort was trying to help Villanova students get their registration correct. That's where this is coming from. They want them to be able to register to one address so that it doesn't come back that they have not registered properly. And believe me, I spent many, 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 many weeks trying to straighten it out. So I would, I would be very unhappy if you moved 7-1 to the Villanova campus for maybe 20 students. Sean, that does not make sense. No, there's not.
So that, those issues are not here.
That's right. I just wanted to set it straight.
Speaking back to our public comment. Thank you for that, Sarah. Is there any other public comment?
Hi, Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. First, wanted to thank both the subcommittee and the board for the process to date for this. For future reference, would have liked to see maybe one extra meeting in the subcommittee so, once the plans were out, that the public comments could actually be tweaked. That's for the future. With that said, the B2 version of the map, particularly the changes that were made from B before, it's a very good map. It's not perfect, but I'm not sure there's a better map that could be drawn given the parameters you have to work with, which is the census blocks, looking at the, excuse me, the arterials and some of the instances of neighborhoods and previously defined wards. So could there be some small tweaks? Again, my opinion, but could there be some small tweaks? Yep, perhaps, but nothing major. It's, it does its job very well. So I want to thank the board and Amanda for that. I know it's not the topic, but as long as the precincts was brought up, both on Jack and Amanda's comment on Villanova. Just to be clear, Ward Three actually has less area of Villanova than it has before. The one that has, is residual, which despite what the census block says, we're led to believe is the 46, which makes sense if you look at the buildings that are there. So whether that would, for next week's discussion, whether that should warrant its own precinct or just stick with two. Because now Ward Three actually would make sense to go back to the library, too, because Ward, Ward Six, I believe, would be, is looking at Wayne Elementary, if I'm not mistaken.
Are you kicking me out of the library?
I'm kicking you out of the library.
Appreciate that.
But, but I, I come up here just because a lot of people maybe didn't get a chance to look at that map and just say, oh, the commissioners looked at it or whatever. And for those of us in the public that looked at it, it, it looks very good.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? So I am going to ask for a motion. Did I do that? Sorry.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Taken into account the very few changes that were not substantive, we are now voting on the, the map is the option B2. So I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I know you're not off the hook yet, but you got us this far, and I'm really, really very grateful to all the hard work that you've put into this and to help our community. Thank you very much. Yes, you will. Okay, so moving on next to Ordinance 2022-12, which is adoption, amending Chapter 263 Trees, revising the composition of the Shade Tree Commission, and amending Chapter 5 Administration of Government Section Parks and Recreation Board to reduce the number of members of the Park and Recreation Board to seven by eliminating the requirement that two individuals from the Radnor Township School Board be appointed. May I have a motion, please? And a second? Okay, is there any commissioner comment? Do I see any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Commissioner Abel is off the dais. Thank you. Okay, we are going to hear from Mr. Norsini about the South Wayne Avenue Flood Reduction Project.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this is going to be a brief update on where we stand on the project, what we've spent, and some of the hurdles which have translated into delays. So just to refresh everybody's memory, this upper portion of the project involved the installation of storm sewer to capture runoff from here and place it in the underutilized Radnor Middle School system. The other major portion of the project was the use of the South Wayne Municipal Parking Lot for stormwater management using the Terra Arch System, which we'll talk about. So these pipes in green, if you will, convey water into here. Just while we're at the map, this is a shot of the Radnor Fire Company apron that we redid. That was a good portion of the project. And there's a sewer line and another sewer line over here. So the Terra Arch System, this is the meat and potatoes of the stormwater management system. So you may recall for quite some time, there was an excavation done in the middle of South Wayne. That is what this is. We'll get into that delay. And here is the stone base that goes under it. And this is actually a picture of the Terra Arches in place. So where do we stand today? Literally, this picture was taken this afternoon. The remainder of the Terra Arches are going in. But I think this is somewhat interesting in that it shows a cross section of what was done. There's stone and an impermeable liner. These are the Terra Arches, which are the, what hold the runoff. Then there's stone, then there's more stone. So where these folks are standing is actually what will be the parking lot again. So there's a lot that went into what goes back into that big hole. So the portion of the stormwater system, the storm sewer, if you will, that conveys runoff to the underutilized Radnor Middle School system, that's done. We are still working on this portion of the project, as you can see. So project delays. The original completion date was about now, right? It was supposed to be about December 1st. Now we're into Q2. Why? What happened? So when we were excavating for the storm sewer and that, that upper green line that I showed you, I was fully aware, and I told the manager this, I knew we were going to encounter a lot of problems here because this is the old part of Wayne. Even I did not imagine what we would encounter. So literally, every trench, every pipe run, there were pipes in the way. There were pipes that we didn't even know what they were. Nobody knew. So each of these times, each of these that were found caused delays. But actually, the largest delay came in this, what we see here, right? This part of the project. That's why that was an excavation for so long. So prior to the design of the project, we did testing, drilling, boring to determine soil type as well as where the water table was. So I'll just, for this, I'll say, we determined from that testing that the water table was at 367. Reality of it is, when, whatever, a year and a half later, it was at 369, 368.5. So that caused a redo, a redesign, if you will, of that system. So we had to raise things up. When we raised things up, the precast inlets had to be changed. So we talk about supply chain. So every time we made these changes, there was a delay in getting that precast concrete. I required in the redesign that a impermeable, impermeable liner be part of the project because my concern is if the water table kept creeping up, we would then start to lose storage volume that the township's spending so much money on. There was a considerable delay in getting that and actually in the installation. It's, picture a big rubber liner that gets heat welded, these seams. So all these items, and which goes back to this, the excavation, the groundwater level, is what pushed the project back. And unfortunately, for all those rain-free days we had in the summer, we have not had them this fall. Those days also contribute to that. So we did redesign the system in such a manner that the 10-year, one-hour event would still be managed, but it costs time, and it's cost money in change orders that the board's previously approved. Remaining work to be completed. So the left-hand side is what we're hoping to get done by the end of the year. And in a nutshell, that means we're trying to get the park, the parking lot paved. That's so that people can use it over the winter. That would be with the base course and the curbs and the sidewalks. One glitch, we are struggling to get lighting. We're going to be using solar-powered lights, but I don't anticipate them coming until spring. So we would use, similar to a portable light tower that you see the police use, you know, the generator with the lights. We're working on that now. But if all goes well, so this Thursday, they're calling for a lot of rain. That doesn't help. But we're doing our best, and we're pushing the contractor at every course to get this done. So we do have some work to do. We have to continue on the Terra Arches. We have to create, sorry, we have to create this. So it's not just putting the arches in. All this is part of it. We have to do that. We have sidewalk and curving, curbing. We have to pave the parking lot. We still have a sewer lateral to run from the library and the temporary lighting. Extremely temperature and weather dependent. So even if it's a sunny day, if the temperatures are too cold, certain aspects of work won't be completed. Any work, and I hope that is nothing, that is not done in this column, will be completed in, in the next year. If all goes well, all this gets done. And next year, we'll be putting the plantings and trees in, the final paving and markings. And then there's still a big chunk of work to be done. A large portion of South Wayne has to be paved, a piece of Runnymede, a piece of West Wayne School Lane, as well as the parking lot. So now we go to the contract. Resolution 2022-55, award the contract on April 25th of this year. The award amount was $4,000, $4,156,338.23. We have a 20% contingency and 10% inspection and construction services for this total. So payments to date on the contract are roughly 40%, so 39%. So there's always at least a one-month lag time between what the contractor does and then our payment. It's not our lag time, it's his. A lot of this, we will incur greater billing if this parking lot gets in because that's the meat of the project. Change orders to date, 202,000, which equates to about 25% of our contingency budget. I'll be perfectly frank, there will be additional change orders coming. Again, every turn, we're hitting, we're finding pipes that we don't know what they are. Luckily, we're not hitting them. But we do have to make changes. And there will be changes due to the length of time of the contract. There's going to be material cost increases. That will be passed to us. And actually, it's, this is the next agenda item. The extended duration is extending our inspections and construction services. So you'll see an item for McMahon and Associates that follows this, actually, right after this. There will be a change order for all this additional design work that was not included in the original scope of work for Meliora because of what we've encountered. And it's only fair for all the redesign work that they have to do. I don't anticipate that being extremely large, but there will be a change order. And then, any questions?
How much do you anticipate the, how much more of a percentage do you think we will go into for a contingency?
Commissioner, I wish I could tell you that we're at 25% now. We're, we're trying to hold them, instead of coming to the board, I make the manager aware, but instead of coming to the board, umpteen times, I'm actually holding them for larger amounts, like $75,000 to $100,000. And you'll see one on tonight. I wouldn't be surprised if we went to 50% or 75%. I'd say we're going to have material increases for next year. Some of those pipes that we encountered that shouldn't have been there caused us to go to different spots in the road, which means we're going to have additional paving that wasn't part of the project. And again, so next year, concrete goes up, asphalt's going to take a jump. There's, it's a domino effect.
And the, the percentage that you showed us now, does that include the two things that are on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Or those additional?
It does not include McMahon, but it does include, these are only Anabanezio change orders.
Commissioner Farhi?
So I'm, I'm sorry, stepped out to use the men's room. So, so it's, we're at 25% of the contingency?
Mm-hmm.
And you're expecting?
I, I really can't tell. I mean, it's truly a guess. I would not be surprised at 50% to 75% of the contingency. I am hoping we don't use it all, but I, I really can't tell you. That's, that's why it's there.
Got it. So the contingency, and I'm sorry, is that one number? Or is it like 25% of the, the project? Or is that?
So the contingency, the budgeted contingency, if you look up in that little table, is 20% of the project. That's what my request to the board was. And we have, as of tonight, will have expended 25% of that.
Got it. So, so you're saying that it could be as high as possible? You don't know, 75? So?
Sure.
Okay, so that could be.
I, again, as we're, there's still two more pipe runs to go. And the one is the sewer lateral for the library. These things are gravity, so I don't have the ability to go up, down, or around. And if it's another gravity line, so far, we've, we've worked everything out. Between either me designing or the designers designing, we've gotten past all these hurdles. I do have concern with that last 350 feet of pipe. I don't know what we're going to find.
Okay, and just one more question. How does this impact the bond if we, I mean, if a project is doubled, so to speak?
Well, so this is, this is what we budgeted, so we're still within the contingency.
Okay.
Right? So this is, this was the budget amount, this table. So as of right now, we're only at 25% of that. So we're, we're still within project budget.
Oh, okay. So we, so you don't think that we'll hit the $800,000 or?
I sure hope not, but I, I'm going to, I'll be honest.
Sure.
I've gone through this with the manager. I'm like, Bill, this is going to be here. And it blows that away, so.
Worst-case scenario, if you do go above the contingency, how does that affect the bond?
It would have impacted, you know, perhaps another project. Or if there's another project where we saved money, right? It wouldn't matter. But I honestly, I don't want to tell you that we're not going to use the whole contingency or they're not, we're not going to go over because everything we've encountered is underground, so I can't even anticipate at this point.
Yeah, so we're not going to have to go out to bid for another bond for this contingency? That's my question.
Yeah, it's already budgeted.
If you go over the contingency?
I guess that would depend on magnitude. And honestly, Mr. Tate and Mr. White, we would look at the project list and see what projects are coming in under, what are going over. So there's, there's some fluidity there.
Madam President, if I could just add a little context to that. You know, I, I, one of Steve's qualities in these conversations is he is, he is very conservative in his estimating. He usually is looking at the worst possible scenario. So if he's, if he's confident that we're, we're somewhere, you know, 50%, 75% at $800,000, I, I am confident that we will not exceed that contingency amount. And as he pointed out, it was part of the borrowing plan, the full 5.4 million. So we have that covered. If by some, you know, something occurs outside of what any of us could sit here and predict today, and it, we do exceed that 831, if, it would have to be an astronomical number to have any kind of material impact on the, the plan that we've put out there because the total of the plan is $15 million. So even if it's over that 831 by 50,000, 100,000, those are still amounts that we can work within the bond. It's not going to have a material impact to the, the debt payments or the long-term viability of the plan. So I, I, you know, all this said, and we're talking about change orders and big numbers, but I don't think that it's, it's altering the plan at all. As we sit here today, I think we're still in really good shape.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm going to make note that I made a mistake, and I skipped an agenda item on the business agenda F. But because we've just had this nice presentation from Mr. Norsini, I'm going to go into the two resolutions for change orders that he requires and then circle back. So my apologies, I just jumped right over that as I was moving through the agenda. So with that in mind, I'm moving to 4B, which is Resolution 2022-152, authorizing the payment of change order number one to McMahon and Associates for increases in inspection and construction administration for the South Wayne Avenue Flood Reduction Project in the amount of $44,960, to be funded from the Stormwater Fund and for a time extension through May 31, 2023. May I hear a motion? In a second?
Second.
Is there any comment from commissioners? Any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Moving on to Resolution 2022-153, authorizing the payment of change order number three to Anabanezio Contractors Incorporated for modifications associated with field directives, the removal of a fuel tank, adjustments to risers in the basin, and the removal of asbestos pipe for the South Wayne Municipal Parking Lot Flood Reduction Project, contract number B22-002, in the amount of $83,475.58 to be funded from the Stormwater Fund and an extension of the contract completion date to May 31, 2023. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any comment from commissioners? Is there any public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you very much, Mr. Norsini, for that update on the South Wayne Avenue Flood Reduction Project. So I will circle back to item 3F, which is Resolution 2022-154, authorizing the acquisition of approximately 9.4 acres in Radnor Township by deed in lieu of condemnation or by such means as necessary for open space, park, or recreational purposes. I'll start with a motion. And a second?
Second.
And then I'll ask our solicitor to fill us in on this.
Yes, this is before the board as a result of a resolution of some fairly longstanding litigation with involving this particular property. Mr. Holloway, who is here tonight, and his organization, you know, were parties to that, that litigation, as was one of the neighbors. It's with his resolution, and Mr. Holloway's offer to convey this property to the township. This will put this to bed. We're hoping to close on this by the end of the year at no cost to the township. And this resolution will facilitate that. It'll reduce some of the costs. And also, basically, as. And also, basically establishes that this will be open space owned by the township. The neighbors, the Rosenblooms, who are the interveners, I wanted to make sure that some future board would not sell this land off and have it used for some other purpose. So, that's the purpose of the resolution. We're hoping that, I think we're on track for the end of December, at some point, to close on the transfer of the property.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? And is there any public?
I have one. I just, I wanted to be sure Jim knew that, I think this is in the fourth ward, so.
Yeah, I know where it is.
Is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So, again, is my, as I had to backtrack on the agenda, I'll just call your attention that we have already covered the South Wayne Avenue Flood Reduction Project, so I'm moving on to the building code update. I will let Mr. Kachansky walk us through this, but just sort of some, the, how we're going to, how we're going to handle this. There are 11 ordinances that will be asked to introduce on this vote, because they are all tied together to our code, and after the presentation from Mr. Kachansky, I think we'll have a better understanding of what each and every one of them does. I've talked with the solicitor, and we will then vote en masse for the introduction at this point, because they are, it's a lot, it's, it's getting us up to speed with some state requirements. And Kevin, if you could, tell us more about it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. You are correct that this is a lot to digest. The last time the township went through this was in 2010, when we adopted the 2009 I-code series. Periodically, the state does go through and update its mandatory statewide building code, also known as the Uniform Construction Code. All municipalities are required to adhere to those standards. Here in Radnor Township, we did have some amendments to those when those were first introduced. As such, we're allowed to bring those amendments forward and carry them from one code series to the next code series. And that's what these ordinances are. These are the local ordinances that basically codify those amendments to the statewide code to make it consistent with what we have listed on our website, and the codes that we enforce with what is adopted by the state. There are 11. Two that I think deserve probably the most discussion, ordinance 2022-24, which amends our Chapter 166, our fire code, and a new ordinance, ordinance 2022-30, is adding an ordinance for the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. That's a new ordinance, because those regulations were previously in the residential building code, but they were subsequently removed by the state and incorporated into the I-code series for the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code.
Thank you. If I could ask you to expand just a little bit, I know that we wanted to do these as a group, but if you wouldn't mind just giving us the headline on each of the amendments, just to know what part of the code we're dealing with?
Absolutely.
And what the impact would be, I'd appreciate that.
Really, there is no impact. These are the codes that we're actually enforcing now. Unfortunately, our website, which what we have locally adopted, does not match with what we're required to by the state. So, there's really no change in what we're going to do. We're obligated by the state to enforce the 2018 I-code series. It's just that there's a lot of confusion with what we have on our website as to what we have adopted locally. But I'll run through each of those. Chapter, ordinance 2022-20 adopts the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code as the code of record that we enforce our building codes under. Again, we are obligated by the state to do so. And you'll see that that's a, really, a one-page amendment, so there's nothing there, just to clarify more administratively. I didn't know if you wanted to?
Yeah, no, I was just looking at, so I will ask any commissioner, as Kevin gives the headline, if you have a question on that particular ordinance, please ask it at that time, and then we'll just go down the list. So.
I'm sorry, point of order, Commissioner Maroney. So, are we going to vote each one separately, or is it just, it's just going to be a blanket vote?
It's going to be a blanket vote for introduction.
For all of them?
We will have for adoption, we'll have to vote individually.
Okay, all right.
But for introduction, with Kevin's guidance through each?
Got it.
I thought it's a little bit pro forma, but I wanted to make sure we knew what we were voting on.
Sure.
So, we'll do it as one, one large vote for all 11, once we've had the explanation of each. Thanks.
And I do have two of the reference codes here, so you can see kind of the volume of which we're dealing with on some of these codes. Ordinance 2022-21 is our building codes. It adopts the International Building Code and the International Residential Code. These are the construction codes which, for new construction, the buildings, whether it's residential or commercial, fall under. This is one of two of the building codes. This is the commercial side. The residential side is slightly thicker in terms of that, and that dictates the type of use that it is, the occupancy limits, what construction methods that the contractor is going to use, and then how we follow that to make sure that they are enforcing it. So, we don't dictate to the design professional how they use these codes. They tell us, and then we confirm their path of compliance.
Any questions on 2022-21? Okay, next.
Ordinance 2022-22 is the 2018 International Existing Building Code. So, unlike the previous ordinance, which was for new construction, you scrape the site, you brand, you build brand-new, the International Existing Building Code is for moderate, alterations and modifications to existing buildings. So, you have an existing commercial structure downtown, they want to change tenants out, and they're going to do an interior fit-out, they fall under the International Existing Building Code. But there's provisions, depending on the level of alterations, that could kick them into other codes, but primarily, we start with the Existing Building Code for existing structures and modifications there, too.
Any questions from commissioners on 2022-22?
So, Kevin, in a couple of these, I noticed that, in the last one and this one, and I read in a couple, in the appeals section, Section 112, Appeals, it says, "Whenever the owner or builder of any building about to be, or in the course of being erected, altered, repaired, and then, I gather, added, has been used or occupied?"
Yes.
That's a section that was added. So, does that mean that, say you owned it as a restaurant, whatever, decided, or whatever, and then you redid it, and then you're reoccupying it, that you have to go through the whole permitting process again? Or is it considered occupied that whole time? Like, I'm just a little?
Depends on what you're doing. If you are changing from one restaurant tenant use to another restaurant tenant use, and it's pretty much a turnkey, there's very minimal requirements that we have to do. We have to go in and make sure that life safety, door signs, exit signs are there, emergency lighting there, fire extinguishers.
Okay. So, that would be sort of the occupied part versus the new part? It just seemed like a lot.
If you're changing from a restaurant to a business office, to a medical office, to a dental office, or restaurant to dental, that's a complete change of use. Depending on the level of alterations, that starts to kick in a lot of the other codes, whether it's sprinklering, alarming, egress, depending on the occupancy load, what you're trying to occupy, it could affect restroom facilities, number of water fountains, and things along that.
Got it.
So, all these codes feed into the other codes, so that the building codes deal with the building construction, electrical codes deal with the electrical component, mechanical codes with the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, so each, they all build upon themselves.
Bless your heart for keeping them all straight.
We have a great staff.
On to 2022-23.
2022-23 is the International Energy Conservation Code. We heard earlier about some of the energy conservation, the state, and really internationally, those efforts to make buildings more efficient and draw down on the use of natural resources and coal, electricity, diesel, whatnot, whatever's used to power the buildings, that there are requirements to make sure that they're efficient, that there's not a lot of air leakage out, air infiltration in. That's what this code does, is looks at making sure that the buildings are as energy-efficient as possible. You get into some of the LEED standards, you hear that for new construction, they rely on these codes a lot to get those LEED certifications.
Any questions on this item? So, now, it's 2022-24, which you had said we might have some interest in.
Yes. Unlike the previous codes, which the state has adopted in its entirety, and it's probably worth saying, if not repeating, we have very little ability to modify these codes. If we didn't have a previously adopted amendment for these, our hands are tied as to changing those. It would require a petition to the state to go through a series of hearings that takes months, if not a year or more, to go through to convince the state why your provision is better than what the state has adopted. That doesn't apply to the International Fire Code. The International Fire Code is only adopted in parts, through reference through the other codes, as I referenced earlier. The building codes will refer to the fire codes for fire suppression and egress, but not all of the fire code was adopted by the state. However, Radnor Township, probably even pre-2009, had adopted the International Fire Code. It's something that we enforce locally. So, this is something that, when we had previously adopted it, it was always under our impression that the fire code, which looks at fire construction, fire rating, emergency egress, fire suppression, alarming, there are a series of appendices in the back of this code. We had always been under the impression, as many municipalities were, that those appendices were adopted as part of the adoption of that code series. It's become very clear, not only in the actual code, and this, this is the fire code, but through a lot of our local chapter code officials, that the appendices in the rear of this book are not adopted as part of the adoption. You have to adopt them specifically in the local legislation. So, staff's recommendation is to adopt all of those appendices as outlined in the ordinance. And if you turn to the second last page, we would not be recommending adoption of Appendix A, which is referencing a Board of Appeals. The township has its own Board of Appeals for this, so we wouldn't need to adopt that appendix. But all of the other appendices would be adopted. There was a provision in Appendix L that we've referenced, high-rise buildings constructed after the effective date. That was a specific provision in that appendix that required a certain date in there. And then, of note, because it is potentially to have some impact, Appendix M is high-rise buildings. There is a provision that would require that high, existing high-rise buildings be required to upgrade their sprinkler system throughout. There is a one-year requirement for buildings to provide the township with a plan of action, and I believe a 12-year phase-in project for those buildings, Radnor House, Rosemont Plaza, that if they're not fully suppressed from a fire code standpoint, that they provide those lifesaving measures in there. Again, that's kind of a phase-in, 12-year period, and I don't want to just kind of allow those to go unnoticed, because that is a specific change. We don't have to adopt the appendices with the adoption, it's going to be adopted later, but staff's recommendation is to adopt all of those.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this item? Okay. Moving on, 2022-25.
2022-25 is the International Fuel Gas Code. So, a lot of the mechanical equipments, your heaters, water heater, house heater, pool heaters, things like that, utilize it, whether it's propane or natural gas. This code regulates how those are to operate. Those obviously use air and have combustion, to make sure that those are properly in, air coming in and air leaving. We don't want to create carbon monoxide issues, or starving the system, which then affects the International Energy Code. So, that's what this code is referencing, the proper use and connection of those fuel-fired appliances.
Any questions from commissioners? The next is 2022-26, Mechanical Standards.
This relates to any of the mechanical appliances that you would have in a building, whether it's your heater, water heater, house heater, could be your cooking appliances, how those are all vented, air conditioning, making sure that the appropriate breathing of the appliances, again, because a lot of these are utilizing natural gas or propane, that they're all installed. That's what we would look to for this code, for those systems in a building.
2022-27, Plumbing.
Plumbing code deals with water supply and discharge, your sanitary sewer, roof drains, and stormwater, to the extent that it would affect one a building. If you can imagine a commercial building that has a flat roof, tends to absorb a lot of rainwater. So, those are all sized as part of this. Fixtures need to be vented, your plumbing fixtures for proper drainage, to avoid the septic gases from coming in. And the plumbing code details all of those parameters for how many fixtures can be connected in a row, the size of the pipes, from your highest fixture down to the lowest fixture, to ensure proper drainage of the plumbing system.
Okay, we're getting there. 2022-28, Code Appeals Board.
Code Appeals Board is the board I referenced earlier, that we would not adopt as part of Appendix A in the fire code. This Code Appeals Board applies to all of the boards, so anytime there is an appeals of our construction codes, whether it's myself or any of our code officials makes a determination, and a contractor or resident doesn't agree with it, there's an appeals process. For zoning, it's the zoning hearing board. For the building side of the house, it is through the Code Appeals Board.
Any questions on that item? Moving to 2022-29, Electrical Standards.
Electrical standards, like the other codes, this is detailing the electrical service and the use in the building, to make sure that there's proper wire size. The bigger and more electrical equipment you have in your house, the larger the amperage coming in, and the size of the service, the size of the wire that needs to be in there. So, this dictates all of that for both commercial and residential.
Okay. So, the last one is 2022-30, that's the swimming pools and spas.
International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. These provisions were previously primarily in the residential code, with some in the building code for commercial facilities. That has all now been pulled down into a separate code that the state has adopted. So, you'll see some of those being deleted in the residential code and the building code, and then now incorporated into this code. So, it's a whole separate ordinance that details deep ends for diving, slip resistance on the bottom of the pools, filter changes, everything kind of gets in there for that, for the swimming pools and for the spas. Chlorine storage, how all of those, all the behind things that you don't see when you go to a commercial pool, generally, there's a regulation on that in this code.
I have to commend you on walking us through that so expertly. Thank you so much. It's exactly the information that I needed in order to feel comfortable moving these forward as a group. So, I will make a motion that we adopt items?
Introduction.
Sorry, introduction, introduction. How am I going to phrase this? So, under the item five, Building Code Update, I am going to make a motion that all items A through K be considered as one at this introduction vote. May I have a second? And I think we went item by item for commissioner comment. I will open it for public comment on a single item or the group. I'm not seeing any. Mr. Rice, I see your mic on. Were you going to say something? Excellent. Then I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Kevin. It was a lot, and I appreciate it. And we're moving on to the?
Thank you.
To reports of the board liaisons. Does anybody have anything to announce?
Just want to say real quick, a big thank you to Tammy Cohen, her staff, a bunch of Radnor volunteers, volunteers from several of the firehouses, the local fire companies around here, who volunteer and then volunteered for Santa's delivery, as well as our public works, and pretty much everyone in the township that had to hear a lot of sirens, and may not have known what's going on, but it is truly one of my most favorite, if not the favorite township. favorite township event that Tammy and her crew hosts. So it was a wonderful time, and I got a lot of thank you texts, and I got an email, too. So thank you for that. There is one issue, or not issue, one thing that was presented at the Parks and Rec that's going to come to this board, and that is the possibility of getting lights at Enki B. And that was discussed at the last Parks and Rec meeting. I actually did talk to several of the people that were looking to install that, which is Radnor Wayne Little League. So if anyone has any questions or concerns, feel free to reach out to myself, Tammy, or members of the Park and Recs board. Other than that, that's what I got.
Thank you. Any other reports? Okay, any new business? Any old business? Any public participation? Take your time. Glad you waited for the whole night.
I made some notes. I have a comment. It was referenced to putting cameras on the school buses. I think since I was a young child, I remember when I first started driving, that the one thing you do not do...
What did I say?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Stephen Bass in Brimar? Yeah, 714 South Winds Drive. Since I was a young kid, I remember that the one thing you do not do is pass a school bus when they're letting off children and the lights are on. And I think in the, when we learned to drive in the test, there might have been a question about that, if I remember correctly. And somewhere in my dark past, I seem to remember, I'm not sure if I violated that or not, but I remember I had a deep impression on me for one reason or another. I think it was an island or something that I might have not missed or something. So since it's supposed to be a learning experience for other people doing this, and you don't want to catch them off guard, sometimes when there's, when there's, when there's an area you want to limit people to 25 miles per hour, you would say, "Speed limit 25 miles per hour, radar monitored," or something like that. So maybe some modification of this term I came up with. Warning, warning. Camera monitoring, cameras monitoring passing cars when red light blinking. Fines and penalty imposed for violation of this law. So something, because this is something new. I'm not sure, were areas where they set up these cameras, where people know there's going to be a camera in that area. I'm not sure if that's supposed to be known or not known to the public, where the red light cameras are set up. So in this situation, it's something new. So maybe some short terminology, with some good editor can modify my statement. Just let the people know that if you do pass, it's a violation, which they should know if they pass a driver's test, and they're going to be fined for it appropriately. And $300 actually sounds somewhat familiar as the amount that this is if you do pass a school bus. So that's a thought that I thought you guys might like to entertain, and maybe something that warns the public that they're, they shouldn't be doing this. And it also is a learning experience for them, because when they see that, it reminds them they shouldn't be doing it. I'm done for the night.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, guys.
Appreciate those suggestions. Is there any other public participation? Can I hear a motion for adjournment?
So.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.